Anyone who knows me knows that I did wish we had to have the hour early. So I'm sorry for that, but we have to get to business. So first item. Let's move. Everybody, we end the year with a flag. Let's begin. To the Lord, the United States of America, and to your love, which extends to one nation, America, invisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Welcome to the third anniversary of the happy summer. Some of the important requirements we will come to meet after. We'll go through the whole couple of weeks more. The management is sure, right? We follow the pattern. So. And the meeting of bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. Notices announcing the date, time, and place for this meeting were sent to all concerned individuals, associations, and sent to Union County local source in accordance with Chapter 231 of Public Law 1975. For the roll call, Ms. Stanton.
Here.
Dr. Porra. Ms. Miller.
Here.
Ms. Justice.
She's waving.
Yep, she's waving, okay. I heard her before, so. Ms. Cohen.
Here.
Vice President Cho.
Here.
And President Cohen.
Here.
You have a form.
Okay.
Wonderful. So we are going to start our meeting with recognition of retirees as well as Teachers of the Year, who I had the wonderful opportunity to have breakfast with a few weeks ago. That was fantastic. So let's start. Yep, you and I. If you can hear me.
Good evening, welcome. As President Cologne has mentioned, this is a great time of year. We've made it through another successful year at Summit Public Schools, of course, under the most challenging of times, but we continue to rise to the top. So thank you to everyone in this room and everyone in the Summit Public Schools district for your support, your tireless efforts. You know, as a community, we really do raise to the top, and our students are better for it. So I'm very happy to be here today for celebration to recognize our Teachers of the Year, to recognize our new hires, as a tradition that we've started this past year to welcome them into the Summit community, or some of our community groups that contribute greatly to our cause and mission and vision in the school district, and certainly to our retirees and our Teacher of the Year, which I mentioned. So it's a very special evening. Thank you for all being here for the celebration. And I'm going to start off by inviting Mr. Evan Kozak to the podium and Ms. Janice Tierney as one of the retirees to kick off our celebration of our retired staff. And on behalf of the Board of Education and from myself, I'll just comment about Ms. Tierney as being such a tremendous leader in this district, not only a leader, but a mentor to the other leaders in this district. So she's a tremendous loss, but we wish her well in the next chapter of her life. So Evan will speak on Ms. Tierney's behalf.
A kindergarten teacher and early childhood advocate, Janice entered into the Summit School system at the primary centers. After quickly establishing herself as a kindergarten guru, she began to craft some lasting moves. She started by implementing an engaging and memorable duckling unit in which all students could research, observe, and experiment and predict how these magical eggs were turned into class companions. And of course, we cannot discuss Janice's Primary Centers legacy without saying the words "full day kindergarten." By advocating and implementing this, Janice has impacted Summit students for years and years to come. Then four years in, Janice moved to Franklin School, a place that needed community and leadership. No stranger to hard work and persistence, Janice's first change was to bring the staff together and give consistency to Franklin kids and confidence to their families. Janice continued to value her signature precious memory-making stamp by implement -- sorry, by implementing events like the snow playdate. And of course, she paved the way for more diverse faculty by way of hiring many staff members with pause, including the one and only Mulligan. You have to meet Mulligan. Throughout her work at Franklin, Janice inspired others to dream and then to do. Once again, her contributions changed the district at large for the better. But while Janice left us with these things, including the big-ticket items of full-day kindergarten and a staff of therapy dogs, a true legacy is not about leaving something for people, rather, it is about leaving something in people, and that is Janice's biggest gift to us. You will be missed. And will Janet Langboard please join Janice at the podium?
I'm still working. Amy Mallory says Janet's creativity and innovative ideas have helped her as a teacher to step out of the box and out of her comfort zone to make learning more exciting for her students. She can teach any subject, and by the way, she has, I think, all grade levels except one in Franklin in all of her years here, and make the lessons amazing, science, social studies, math, and so on. You'll not find a teacher who works harder than Janet, or one who is better to her students and to her colleagues. She cares for everyone and encourages them to work to her potential. We all feel very fortunate to have worked with Janet, but even more importantly, we feel valuable because we have her as a friend forever. We know she is retiring, but we will always ask her for her advice in teaching and in life. Her third grade colleague Lori Alphonne adds, "Before saying that you are an extraordinary teacher and colleague, I must tell you first that you are an extraordinary human being. Thank you for fostering and showing so very much compassion and care for us all in the Franklin family. You are about to enter a world where you can sip a cup of tea on the beach at sunset or sunrise with sand in between your toes. If you are a teacher, you may never really retire from the task of teaching, but I'm sure you will continue to help others. Congratulations." She only needs a first name. This one's going to be hard for me.
Oh, good.
Laura Lai was my rock when I entered Franklin School. She is the reason that I was successful there, and I will forever be grateful for her presence in my life. Marty Napolos, who is our main office secretary, who's worked with Laura Lai for over 23 years, says that Laura Lai is one of those rare people who instantly becomes a friend instead of just a coworker. When I first -- not me, I'm speaking as Marty. When I first started working at Franklin, I saw her give selflessly every morning with book clubs, lunch clubs, kindness crew, no stipends, just student smiles as a reward. She's been a mentor teacher for many new first-year teachers, giving countless advice. Laura Lai always made time to meet with them weekly and checked in often with endless support, and I know that Laura Lai even left letters for those who are joining us next year. One of Laura Lai's best qualities is her ability to stay calm in the middle of the storm. On that dreadful day of 9/11, she kept calm and shared insights and thoughtfulness to anxious children and staff members. She stayed in our building and helped until every student had left us on that difficult day. And for almost a year, she gave up her lunch to spend it every day to support a student whose father had passed away on that day. Laura Lai is also a stem cell donor. She volunteered when a Summit family hosted a child from the Dominican Republic who needed homeschooling when undergoing special surgery. Laura Lai, you are a wonderful friend. You are appreciated more than we can say. Why, it's so hard for us to imagine Franklin without you. Thank you for making a difference in so many lives. And our first grade teacher Jen Swartzinbeck adds, "Teachers occupy a position of great trust and sensitivity. They have a responsibility to educate and lead our students to accomplish great things. Laura Lai, you are an amazing individual and educator. We appreciate all of your valuable skills and knowledge. It is our sincere wish from your entire Franklin family that you will enjoy many years of a well-earned rest and retirement." And now I would like to invite Dr. Joe Cordero up and Bruce Fenske.
Mr. Bruce Fenske spent close to 30 years with the Summit Public Schools, all at Jefferson School. Bruce's reach extended beyond the gymnasium walls. As a cross-country and middle school basketball coach, Bruce mentored and inspired students throughout the entire district while putting up a pretty impressive win number. Every time you walked into his gym, the sounds of laughter, music, all these bag goodies and excitement were sure to be heard. Despite the fact that we disagreed on who was the best Major League Baseball team, my Yankees over his A's any day, and who was the best NFL team, my Giants over your Cowboys any other day, and I had to see those banners hanging in the gym every time I went in. "You're a great guy, Bruce. Your love for the students shines bright through the halls of Jefferson each day. Jefferson and the Summit Public Schools are going to miss you greatly. We thank you for your years of service. We thank you for your dedication, your support, and there's no one like you. You're going to be a Jefferson Jaguar forever. Thank you." Mrs. Marisol Rodriguez, if you could come up. Mrs. Rodriguez spent 17 and a half years with the Summit Public Schools. 16 of those years were at Jefferson. During her time at Jefferson, Marisol was an integral part of our community. She was instructional aide whose flexibility and willingness to always step in at a moment's notice will forever be appreciated, especially during the past few years. Honestly, there wasn't a day that went by that you didn't see Marisol working closely with the teachers and students. Our Jefferson community, thank you, Marisol, for your dedication, your support, your care, and you too will be forever at Jefferson Jaguars. So thank you. We will miss you greatly. And now, Capitano, if you would come up.
Can I invite members of Patty Lagwa's family up, please? Usually, these speeches include a "hope you enjoy your retirement," but sadly, I won't be saying that tonight. Patty Lagwa, a devoted, hard-working, and extremely loving person, was an employee of the district for 25 years, and she probably would have worked another 25 years if she could. She sadly passed away this past October and has left behind her beautiful family. And with us here tonight is her husband Doug and her daughter Cassie. She always talked about having a big retirement celebration, so tonight I want to honor that by sharing a glimpse of the beautiful person that was Patty Lagwa. Patty was officially an accountable clerk, but boy, did she give the district so much more than that. If you had a question on a purchase order, Patty was your girl. If you needed to vent about how strict business office rules were, Patty had your listening ear. If you needed to cry, Patty gave you her shoulder, a box of tissues, and a phone call later that night, checking up on you. Patty did it all, and you couldn't dream of a more selfless person than her. I used to call her Saint Patty because she was always preparing a meal or arranging care for someone who really needed it. Lots of folks from central office who are recipients of her homemade chicken noodle soup prompted by the sound of a cough. Her heart couldn't be any bigger, as her love couldn't be any stronger than it already was. She gave it all, 100% of the time, and with whoever she was working with, and she carried that dedication to her personal life as a wife, a mother, grandmother, daughter, family, and friend. Patty, you are in our hearts, and you continue to bring out the good in people even when you're not physically around. So many have benefited from your loving heart and your beautiful soul. All who knew you were better people because of you. You're a modern-day saint, and Summit is so honored to have had you as an employee and a friend. Thank you for blessing us with 25 amazing years. We will continue to organize those POs as neatly as you did, and of course, keep the legacy of your kindness alive. I'm sorry you can't be here to celebrate with us tonight, but please, keep dancing, keep on smiling down on us. We miss you so much, and we'll never stop loving you. Now Matt Carlin, please come up, and Ann Anderson.
Instead of Matt, you get me? Although some have mistaken each other, us for each other at times, to be honest. Thank you, Kathy, that was very well done. Matt had every intention of being here this evening, but due to reasons beyond his control last minute, he was unable to make it, so it's my honor to speak his words on behalf of Ann Anderson. Take a moment and close your eyes. Now think about that one gentle teacher in your life. You know, that one teacher who, in his or her presence, assured you that you were safe, cared for, understood, and valued. That teacher who greeted you each day with a smile, and even in the most challenging of times, engaged you with a calm and empathetic tone, because we know that part of growing is also learning from our mistakes. Gentle, it's just one word that captures Ann Anderson and her presence as an educator for the past 26 years in Summit. Ann is a homegrown product of Summit. She began her career as a substitute in the district and transitioned into a teaching position where she has taught at the second, third, and fourth grade levels. In fact, Ann has been such a homegrown product of Summit that she has actually lived in Summit for many years. Ann's dedication as an educator has been highly evident in her investment into her daily instruction, participation as an instructor for after-school activities and workshops, and so much more. Learner, another word that captures Ann's investment as an educator. What an example of Ann's commitment to growing and learning. Look no further than her response to the current pandemic as she took on the challenges and engaged her students through new applications of technology and took her instruction even greater heights despite all the obstacles our teachers have faced over the past three years. And what has Ann asked for in return? Nothing more than successful and caring students, friendships from her colleagues, and possibly a Diet Coke and some M&amp;M's here and there. As I said at our recent Lincoln Hubbard staff gathering, Ann, I will miss the gentleness of your interactions with your students, the call of a Tootsie Roll lollipop while walking through the hallway, and seeing you interact with your students in an individual conference with a "here's something I'd like to teach you." I'm proud of you, your family's proud of you, and I certainly know your father is looking down on you right now with that same pride and love only a father can have for his daughter. God bless. I now would re-invite Mr. Kozak to the podium.
All right, Diane Costebos, come on down. Okay, Diane, there's something about Diane. What can I say? The truth is, if you want solid advice, the truth, and a true teammate, Diane is your go-to person. She has worked at the primary centers, what was it, 13 lucky years? With numerous teachers and countless students. I have no doubt that each one of those lucky individuals remembers something special or unique about her. No matter who you talk to, they all have wonderful things to say about her. When I first started in Summit, Diane was one of the first colleagues I reached out to, to ask questions, bounce ideas off of, to gauge what type of situation I was walking into. Much like Allstate, I knew I was in good hands. Pause for laughter. Oh, sorry. I forgot to say that. Let's not forget the voices of some of the other important people, the students with whom she has worked with. Before school ended, Diane, I talked with some of the students to see what memories they wanted to share. Common themes included laughter, making them feel better, explaining things, as well as she was just so nice. Big words from young learners. She talks to her young scholars in such a special way, and a way in which she knows and they know they love each other. Diane is one of the first people I see enter the building each morning, and sometimes is the last to leave. You see, she rather complete tasks like copying, preparing materials, organizing, leave that to after or before school, so her entire day can be dedicated to the most important people, the students. While I'm sad, well, we're all sad, that you'll not spend your days at the primary centers next year, it's comforting to know we will all think of you as we walk the hallways of the primary centers, because somewhere along the way, something will remind us of her. Well, perhaps it's a life-size cardboard cutout I ordered of you, but. Our primary center teacher Francine Gibbons, and these are her words, "Diane Costebos is a teacher that becomes your family. There are generations of students that have felt loved, safe, and supported by Diane. They know they can trust her in any circumstance, and that trust creates happiness. Happiness leads to learning, and learning leads to amazing growth in all areas." We should copyright that, because that's absolutely perfect. Diane knows every child inside out, and she understands what each student needs to be successful. Diane is family to the parents of our youngest learners. Seeing her face at arrival each morning gave them a sense of peace as they started their day, knowing they have left their children with a person who truly loves them, like their own. Diane is family to her colleagues. Her presence in our lives has given us strength, courage, lots of laughs, and the drive to be the best we can be. She has the ability to bring people together in any circumstance. As Diane begins her retirement, she can rest assured she has created relationships that will be remembered for a lifetime by the people of Summit. I am forever thankful for her presence in my life. You know, Diane, the other day, when I was thinking of what to write in this Oscar-winning speech, I passed by a mural in the primary center, and I saw the mural of flowers, and then I walked through our learning garden, because I had to order it. And, you know, each year as we plant our seeds, there is growth and regrowth, but as we enter the building next year, we should all be happy because the seeds that you planted, they're all going to grow and continue to regrow, just like the light that you have brought to us. Diane, this isn't goodbye. We only part to meet again. Are you free in September to sub? Diane, you will be missed.
Thank you.
Okay, congratulations to all our retirees who were able to join us tonight, but there's several other who were not, so I will read their names now and recognize them. Marie Adam, bilingual child study team social worker, Jefferson Primary Center and Jefferson Elementary School. Maria Balchior, inclusion aid, Summit High School. Cheryl Curly, inclusion aid, Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School. Stephen Doudroff, custodian, Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School. Michelle Eric, third grade teacher, Lincoln Hubbard. Dana Folk, third grade teacher, Washington Elementary School. Irene Hauk, inclusion aid, Wilson Primary Center. Jane Jones, family and consumer science teacher, Summit High School. Kathy Connect, third grade teacher, Jefferson Elementary. Peter Koppenall, physics teacher, Summit High School. Doug Matty, high school head custodian, Washington Elementary School. Dan Miller, social studies teacher, Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School. Mary O'Connor, computer technician, Technology Department. Angelo Palumbo, director of facilities. Lu Pepe, assistant superintendent and business administrator. Jill Plaski, special education teacher, Washington Elementary. Mary Clay Poole, first grade teacher, Brayton Elementary. And Nancy Priskew, library secretary, Franklin Elementary School. Let's have a round of applause for all of our dedication. Thank you for your service, and it's fitting, as we celebrate you on the way out of the district, that later we'll be celebrating part of our 2022 hiring class later in our meeting as they join our team in Summit Public Schools. So a special moment. At this time, I'd like to invite our vice president, Mr. Yan Cho, up to the podium to announce our Teacher of the Year candidates.
So we're certainly very fortunate to have educators and staff members who are not only dedicated to the students of Summit, but who work tirelessly to cultivate a positive and healthy environment for our children. Each year, a select group of staff members are recognized by Union County for exceptional use of effective and innovative instructional strategies supporting and elevating the learning process for their students, and most of all, encouraging high achievement. We congratulate the Union County 2021 and 2022 Teacher of the Year recipients and thank them for their passion, commitment, and energy they bring to their students into our district. After I call the names of this year's recipients, would those in attendance, please come forward to the podium to receive a small token of our appreciation and post our quick photo. So to start, from the primary centers, Stacy Kaplan, literacy coach. Brayton Elementary, Susan Harden, ESL teacher. Franklin Elementary, Kate Holmes, fifth grade teacher. And from Jefferson Elementary, Bruce Fenske, physical education teacher. Hello, I'm back up here. And from Jefferson Elementary, Bruce Feska, physical education teacher.[589.32][589.32](applause) Washington Elementary, Lauren Madden, second grade teacher.[631.91][631.91](applause) Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School, Melissa Saracino, eighth grade Spanish teacher.[644.62][644.62](applause)
Okay, now going to review a few resolutions and commendations. And this is to give a small thank you to the organizations that contribute to the district over the course of the year. I would ask, just for purposes of logistics, that the board step away, because we're going to line the representatives up in front of the dais for a photograph. Lorene controls everything here, so Lorene says move, we move. Every school district relies on community partnerships to help improve the overall experience of public education. The best ones are fortunate to not have partnerships, but true partners who become integral pieces of the long journey that leads to successful outcomes for kids. In Summit, our partners provide structured learning experiences in the form of tools, curricula, training, experiential study, exploration, and enhanced programming. Some make distinctive extracurricular and co-curricular experiences possible, as well as donate limited time and scarce resources. Others not only work to engage our entire community on key topics involving the district, but also push the board and the administration to be better listeners on the issues that matter to parents. No matter the category of support, our partners have contributed to the district's goals and commitment to scholarly excellence. Tonight, as a small token of our appreciation, we honor many of them publicly and simply say thank you for making Summit a very special place to live. I will call out the names of the organizations that we have, and if there is a representative from that organization, please come forward to receive a certificate of appreciation that's held by Superintendent Huff, and then form a line in front of the dais for the photo at the end. And for applause, please wait until we get through the full group, and then we can cheer for as long as we wish. La Comunidad Hispanica España y Acción Trabajo Trabajando por Summit. Any representatives? Okay. The Giving and Receiving Assistance for Communities Essentials, otherwise known as Grace.[823.37][823.37](applause) Hey, look, he's a superintendent.[832.56][832.56](laughter) I'm not going to hold him back.[836.00][836.00](pause) Yeah, you can stay. Hilltopper Stage Productions. Pride in Educational Pursuits. Pomtonian Food Service. Give this a second. The PTO President's Council. The Summit Educational Foundation. The Special Education Parents Advisory Committee. Chaping Summit Together. The Summit Music Parents Association. The Summit Performing Arts Resource Committee, otherwise known as Spark. Speak Up Summit. The Summit Area YMCA. The Summit Boosters Association. Just stay here, it's fine. The Summit Fire Department. The Summit Free Public Library. The Summit Police Department. And the Summit Foundation. Okay, thank you all for your wonderful support throughout the past year.[976.00][976.00](applause) Think so. Yep. All right. I'm up. That's a pretty good way to start a meeting, honoring all of our wonderful educators. And so, figure out a way to start every meeting that way, Scott. I'd like to begin by thanking all of our principals and educators for getting our students to the finish line this past school year. And as you know, Summit is not satisfied with getting to the finish line, but finishing strong, which is exactly what happened in the past few weeks. And so, again, with inclusive of all of our traditional year-end events in all of our schools, which is a whirlwind, and it was wonderful to experience this year, especially this year, given the last few years. And so, thank you again to all of the principals, educators, administrators who participated in all of that great work. Congratulations to all of our graduates at all levels, and on behalf of our board, I want to wish all of our students and staff a healthy, fun, and relaxing summer for the next few months. In my presidential comments, over the next 10 months, I'm going to try to touch upon activities that are occurring in each of the schools over the course of the year. And I'd like to start with Lincoln Hubbard and a group known as the Pride Pals. For those who are not aware, the Pride Pals initiative began this school year. While it was recently created, the participation and impact was greater than the students could have imagined. The Pride Pals team is made up of more than 45th grade students who volunteer their time to make a difference through service while nurturing the Lincoln Hubbard community and spirit. Activities have included organizing a food drive for a local shelter, creating a choice board game for families to participate in together, and hosting Olympic activities of class challenges to build teamwork and school spirit. Character.org, a national advocate and leader for character in schools and communities, certified 152 promising practices in schools and organizations, including the Pride Pals program at Lincoln Hubbard Elementary School. Dr. Arthur Schwartz, president of Character.org, said, "Each of these programs and initiatives have demonstrated significant impact and strongly aligned with the principles that help schools and organizations cultivate a culture of character." On behalf of the Board of Education, I am pleased to recognize the students of the Pride Pals program, as well as Principal Carlin and fifth grade teacher, Ms. Ashley Fuchs, who met with the students regularly to help develop ideas and bring them to life. You are all true examples of what it means to be a Hilltopper. And with that, I pass the mic to you, Superintendent Huff.
Thank you, President Cologne, well said. I will open my report by likewise congratulating the Summit High School class of 2022, 290 students, including graduates from our transition 18- to 21-year-old program in the Summit Community Center. Congratulations to all of our students, including our eighth grade students, 311 of them who have been promoted from eighth grade and will be entering freshman in Summit High School next year. I am honored to announce the Summit Educational Foundation Nora Rades Award, which is awarded to someone who embodies the SEF spirit of innovation through writing and implementing grants. This year, it was a no-brainer to select Kristen Schuman at Jefferson Elementary School. The work Kristen has done for the Jefferson Elementary STEAM Innovation Lab has paved the way for the other innovation labs at the elementary schools and the transformation of our STEAM programming in the district. Ms. Schuman is taking a leadership role with the implementation and development of our new STEAM classes at each of the elementary schools. Thank you very much, Kristen. Well done. To sum up the year with our most recent accolades in athletics, Summit Girls Lacrosse wins its second Tournament of Champions title with a 14-10-4 victory over Oak Knoll. In addition, the Girls Lacrosse won the sectional, group, and Stars and Stripes North Division Championship. As a side note, the final four teams in the Tournament of Champions semifinals were all in the Stars and Stripes Division, North Division, which is one of the toughest leagues in the country. Congratulations to our girls team. Our boys lacrosse won the Union... Little battery issue, good thing I have backup.
Always need backup.
Shout out to someone who put that in my folder today. Unexpected power outage. So our boys... Okay, there we are. Our boys won the Union County Tournament State Sectional Championship and tied for the Fit Pit Division Championship. Congratulations to a successful season to our boys lacrosse. Congratulations to our varsity soccer coaches, Ben Howie Anderson, Coach of the Year Award, which is voted by the high school coaching staff. The award is named for Howie Anderson, legendary coach and athletic director for Summit High School, and that goes to coaches Ben Stewart and Matt Schachtel. Congratulations to the theater program at Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School and Summit High School. The two schools received a total of 35 nominations and 11 wins from Montclair Theater Night Awards. Summit High School Theater received 24 nominations and won in eight different categories, including outstanding overall production of a musical for Newsees and the JoAnn Fox Award for Excellence in Theater Education for Ann Poyner. The middle school theater received eight final nominations and three wins for productions of puffs. Happy to see all of our spring band and corps concerts towards the end of the year go off as planned as usual. Very nice to see, celebrating all of those activities. At Summit High School, the Students for Relay for Life Club set their fundraising goal at $2,000 and ended up raising $6,313. This is only the second year of the club, and the club for Summit High School raises funds for awareness to support the efforts of the American Cancer Society. Throughout the year, they raised money throughout bake sales, candle sales, staff dress-down days, and community outreach and individual fundraising. On Saturday, May 21st, they capped off a fundraising with an all-day Relay for Life event at Connel Park in Berkeley Heights. Their team, the Hilltoppers, walked all day from 12:00 PM to 12:00 AM to acknowledge cancer, to acknowledge that cancer never rests, so neither do we. They were excited when it was announced that they were named fourth-place fundraising team out of 27 teams. Congratulations. Excellent community service as well. At the middle school, eighth grade students, Arissa King, received the Community Service Award for completing the most volunteer hours, 225 of them this school year. Congratulations to Arissa and to all of the eighth grade students who completed their community service hours. The students were treated to a breakfast on Tuesday with guests including Board President Michael Cologne, Board Vice President Yan Cho, and Trevor Cromwell, senior youth and teen coordinator from Summit Area YMCA. Thank you to all the staff and parents who helped organize this event. At the elementary school, our fourth grade ideas students worked with Mayor Rades and the Summit Police Department to learn more about traffic safety. Then the students created a public service announcement to teach others how to drive safely around the schools. Very important. You can find our PSA videos on the district's YouTube channel. And in elementary world as well, they celebrated their fifth grade dare graduation in the past weeks. At the primary centers, students celebrated the successful end of the school year as well with a clapout. Families, friends, and teachers surrounded our young scholars as they rose up to the next level in our school district. So that concludes my report, but from this point, I'd like to move on. As many of you know, we like to invite our new hires, and part of our 2022 hiring class are with us this evening. And it's quite a large class, though this hiring process, thanks to all the work in the administration and Mr. Gardella's office, has been an ongoing event throughout the spring season, and it'll continue through the summer. But we definitely like to recognize our new hires and welcome to the Summit family. As I call your name and give your assignment, please stand so the board and the audience can recognize you based on your name and location. And I'm going to start with Dr. Joseph Cordero, who many of you know is not new to the district, but has been with us for the last five years as principal, successful leader of Jefferson Elementary School as principal. Joe's time here in Summit, he has made some transformational changes in the lives of many of our community members, our teaching staff, and our administrative leadership as well. He is now taking on the role of Director of Curriculum and Instruction. We are very pleased to welcome him to our cabinet-level administration, and we look forward to your contributions, Joe. Thank you very much.[1597.47][1597.47](applause) We have Danielle Melissa, mental health clinician, social worker. She's watching virtually right now, I'm told, so we'll mention her. From there, the rest of you, if you're in presence, please stand up. We'll go with Lillian Dowes, elementary teacher, Brayton Elementary School. Lexi Culver, elementary teacher, Franklin Elementary School. Emma Stark, elementary teacher, Franklin Elementary School. Kara Capone, elementary teacher, Lincoln Hubbard Elementary School. Olivia Podzabierski, elementary teacher, Lincoln Hubbard Elementary School. Alexandra Scannello, elementary teacher, Lincoln Hubbard. Brooke Tepper, elementary teacher, Lincoln Hubbard. Danielle Patrick, elementary teacher, Washington Elementary School. Peter Sotera, social studies teacher, Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School. Bernadette Burke, music teacher at Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School. And Nicholas Marino, math teacher, Summit High School. At this time, President Cologne, I'd like for you to please make a movement to vote on our new hires as part of the superintendent's report.
Certainly will do. Do I have a motion to approve the new hires?
So moved.
On the roll, Ms. Stanton.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Vice President Cho.
Yes.
President Cologne.
Yes.
Motion carries.[1726.51][1726.51](applause) Okay, yeah, we will do a three-minute recess, so that if you don't have any further business with the board meeting, you don't need to trudge through it. So thank you and welcome to all the new hires. Fantastic.
Thank you.
Any comments before I ask for a motion?
Yes, Mr. President. You'll see on the agenda, one of the items is the HIV grades. Each year, the New Jersey Department of Education requires school districts and every school within the district to conduct an annual self-assessment on how well they implement the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. Each school's safety team conducts a self-assessment based on eight categories. HIV programs, training on the Department of Education-approved policy, staff instruction and training programs, curriculum and instruction on HIV, HIV personnel, school-level HIV incident reporting, and HIV investigation procedures. And... and H I B investigation procedures, and H I B state reporting. The minimum requirement for each school's score is 58 with a maximum score of 78. Summit Public School grades are as follow, and this, I will note, is for the 2021 school year. Summit High School scored a 72. Lawton C. Johnson Summit Middle School, 76. Brayton Elementary, 76. Franklin Elementary, 76. Jefferson Elementary, 76. Lincoln Hubbard Elementary, 76. Washington Elementary, 76. Jefferson Primary Center, 76, and Wilson Primary Center, 76, with an overall district average of 76. These grades will be posted on the district's website as required by the New Jersey Department of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Huff. And if we have no further comments on the item... Items, I would like a motion to approve.
Second.
On the roll, Ms. Stanton.
Yes.
Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Ms. Justice.
Yes.
Ms. Cohen.
Yes.
Vice President Cho.
Yes.
President Cologne.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, we move to committee reports. I will start with the Education Committee, and I sat in as chair for that committee, so I will read the minutes. The meeting took place on June 2nd. It lasted approximately 40 minutes. In attendance, myself, Superintendent Huff, and Jennifer McCann. It was a light agenda, so we discussed textbook purchases for the Summit High School Advanced Math Curricula as well as statistics. The current textbooks for these subjects are outdated, and the new math textbook will integrate the curriculum of several math courses, and the new statistics textbook will be more closely aligned with the AP exam content. Both purchases are included within the 2022-23 budget. We then moved on to a review of the preliminary iReady data for grades K through 8. The data reflected learning gains in both math and reading across all grade levels in schools. Once the final iReady data for 2122 is gathered and analyzed, the results will be presented to the committee and shared in an upcoming meeting. We then moved on to the Meeting Agenda Matrix, which is a schedule of committee topics and presentations for the coming year. We plated that item pending the transition of Dr. Cordero into the role that he has just been approved to serve in. And so in the upcoming committee meeting, we will review that Agenda Matrix for this year. The committee recommends the approval of the purchase of the textbooks as well as the standard curriculum, instruction, and program items included in today's meeting agenda. The next meeting of the committee will be July 7th at 3:00 P.M. Any questions from committee members or noncommittee? Okay. We move to... Ops next? Let's go Ops.
So the Operations Committee met on June 1st for approximately an hour and 15 minutes. In attendance were Superintendent Scott Huff, Derek Jess, and Emilio Torres, board members Melanie Cohen, Kelly Stanton, and myself. The first item for discussion was an update on the Investing Our Future Bond Project. The staff provided a summary of the feedback from the public forum, which was held on May 23rd. A number of comments related to the scope of the project, including items that were not contemplated to be considered, impact on the students during the potential construction and such. Given where we are at this time, the staff has the notes on the comments and feedback that they'll work through with district staff and the advisors at the appropriate time. All the plans and planning is on hold until the potential approval for the bond issuance is received. The next steps from this point going forward would be a vote by the Board of Ed, which is scheduled for tonight. And then after that, it would go to the Board of School Estimate, and then the final approvals will be at the City Council level. On the Food Service Update, Pomtonian, there was a monthly surplus for April of approximately $20,465, and then year-to-date, a very healthy $190,000, all positive variance to budget. This surplus can only be used for food service-related expenses, such as equipment and inventory. The staff will review what the needs are for the upcoming school year, and then the remainder will be held in reserve for future needs. The surplus is primarily driven by the government program subsidy related to COVID, which has expired, so this will not likely reoccur next year, and the budget has accommodated for that. A couple of minor updates at the state level from a legislation perspective. Two changes with respect to the busing issue. One, which has expanded who's allowed to drive the smallest Type S bus, and another extending the useful life of the buses from the 13-years, and larger buses, 16-years. And both, again, were designed to help school districts manage around the driver shortages and equipment costs. The staff also presented some potential changes around the petty cash policy, which currently is instituted at every school and some departments, and intent is to potentially revise the petty cash policy to consolidate down to just at the high school level and reduce the amount of accounting and such for that. The school district has commissioned a demographic study, which is currently in progress, to assess the impact of the various new developments proposed in town. Currently, we don't have the full results yet, which we expect to get later in the summer, but we have seen a small increase in the kindergarten enrollment for Fall '22, approximately 35 students compared to last school year. And then the final item on the agenda was related to staffing and personnel. Couple of changes to the job description for existing positions within the business office and the IT staff to reflect the more accurately the duties and responsibilities. Reviewed proposed compensation for the upcoming year for the central admin and non-representative staff, and those items are in the finance and personnel agenda. So for committee recommendations for the board action would be, one, the vote and approval of the proposed bond issuance, approval of the proposed fiscal year '22-'23 salaries per the personnel items, as included in the attachment to the agenda, and approval of the standard operating and financial items, as noted in the agenda. Kelly, Melanie, I know there's a lot there. Kelly, your first meeting, committee meeting. Any comments or questions about any items? Did I miss anything?
You want to go first?
Okay, I'm happy to go first. I just want to first say that I'm really comfortable with the staff work that has been done on the proposed board issuance, and I thank the administrative staff and the leadership team for all their hard work on that. I do have one question. There was a public Q and A that was held about a month ago that was mentioned in the minutes, and I was just wondering if the superintendent could talk about any key takeaways, if there were any, from that meeting?
Certainly. It was a pretty well-attended public forum. They gave the public an opportunity to weigh in on how the bond issuance will affect them and their families. And in addition to what Mr. Cho shared, there was a question about what does that mean for student life during the construction process? A question or two about the impact of parking for the residents near the lower field that we plan to turf, but recognizing that that's an existing problem. That's not a problem that necessarily would be brought to the table as a result of turfing the field. They were just curious of how that would impact it moving forward. But for the large majority of the people who chose to speak, it was really asking about why aren't we doing more? Which projects were left off of our list and why? Depending on their perspective and how it affected them and their families. So in large... In very, very large support for the bond issuance from that public forum.
Great. Thank you.
I would like to chime in on that note. I personally wanted to say, after discussing with you and talking about the discussions, that I truly appreciate the transparency the district has provided with the proposal, the open discussions that have been held to answer any questions and provide any clarity that's needed. I feel really confident that you not only have looked at how this will academically help keep Summit at the forefront of education, but have considered providing ample opportunity for fostering of student and staff-teacher relationships, social and emotional growth through classroom discussion, and support of new and renewed growth and interest in the programs both in and out of the classroom. So I just wanted to say thank you for the time that you've taken and all the personnel that have been involved in putting this together.
Thank you. Any other comments and questions from the rest of the board?
Okay. We move to policy. Melanie.
Great. The Policy Committee met on Wednesday, June 1st, starting at 3:30 P.M., and we met for 40 minutes. Attending was Superintendent Huff, Rob Gardella, Kathleen Murphy, and board members Walida Justice, Joseph Porak, and myself. The committee discussed several policy topics, including Policy 3161 and Policy 4161 around examination for cause, which was revised. These policies have been rewritten to include updated language. They address the process a school district must use when a Board of Education or superintendent want to require a physical or psychiatric examination of a staff member that shows evidence of deviation from normal physical or mental health. The two policies are very similar, but 3161 covers certified training staff, and Policy 4161 covers support staff. There are no changes required to the regulation. It was just a revision of... A rewriting of the language, updating of the language. Also, we talked about Policy 3233, which is political activities. This policy has recommended terminology changes, most prominently the revision of the term "chosen freeholders" to "county commissioners." No changes are required to the regulations for this policy. And then Policy 7410 and Regulation 7410.01 on the maintenance and repair and the facilities' maintenance, repair, scheduling, and accounting. Both the policy has been written and the regulation revised to reflect the State Board of Education reallocating administrative code sections... I'm sorry, relocating administrative code sections. P. 7410 now has additional code requirements, such as requiring school districts to employ a certified educational facilities manager. Summit Public School District is in compliance with the new requirements. Policy 7410 and Regulation 7410.01 are mandated. So the committee recommendations are the first reading of the revised policies 3161, 4161, 3233, and revised policy 7410 and Regulation 7410.01. And then second readings of the policies or final readings and abolishments, as noted from the May meeting, that are listed in the agenda. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, July 6th at 3:30 P.M. And if... I think that's it. If Walida, who's on, has any additions? Or are there any questions from the board? Okay, I think that's it then.
Okay. Ms. Miller, Communications.
Thank you, thank you. All right. Hello, everyone. The Communications Committee met on June 14th for 50 minutes, mostly because we were having such a good time. From the administration was Scott Huff, Lorraine Callender, and Doug Orr, and joining me were Jan Cho and, for her second meeting, Kelly Stanton. So everything that we spoke about is a result of ongoing and continued improvement in our communications realm. This is the third time I sit on this committee, my second as chair, and I can tell you, from my first year now to my last, the improvements that have been made in how, when, and where we communicate are just outstanding. So I want to thank the administration for that because I see a notable difference. The first thing that we spoke about was one of those changes. We spoke about the profile that went out for our new Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Joe Cordero. That was sent to relevant groups, and it is that type of sharp, clean communication that helps people understand what's going on at important levels in the district. And it's a simple thing, but it's a very powerful thing. So we... The committee very much liked that. We then went on to look at the results of the communications survey, which was done during our last school cycle, and we discussed the results and the insights. Key here is the fact that we even do a communications survey year over year. And Lorraine and the administration respond very well to the information that they receive in it. We got a lot more participation this year than last year. Our Spanish language participation was well up over last year. And we learned a number of things about what our parents want and need right now in terms of written communications, where they like to get their information from, who they're relying on, what they're accessing, what they're not accessing, et cetera. And of course, tweaks and changes will be assessed and made based on the survey. We thank everybody who took the time to respond to it because it's very helpful to us. Next, we spoke about something that we're anticipating, which is NJ SLA results. So after a two-year COVID-related absence, that assessment was given this past spring. The district anticipates receiving results this summer. I don't know if we've found out when they'll be received. We still have not. And we look forward to the Education Committee looking over those, but in anticipation of, you know, potential elements in those findings. We discussed what those communications might look like. And finally, we discussed drill notifications. So policy now requires that the district notify parents within 24 hours of a non-fire drill. So there's no requirement to notify parents of a fire drill, but other drills, such as lockdown drills, evacuation drills, active shooter drills. The district must notify parents within 24 hours. So the district is working on protocols and content elements for those notifications. We have no recommendations at this time. We will meet again on July 6th. We just changed it. July 6th at noon. And that's about it. Anything that I missed, Jan or Kelly?
Nope.
Any questions? All right. See you next month.
Thank you. Negotiations did not meet this month. There were no agenda items, and so we will move right to liaising. Did any board members liaise this past month?
I did. I did participate in the end of the last meeting for the school year for the S E F, where, somewhat to our meeting, they had a changing of the leadership, new... The new S E F president for next year, Amy Burke. They are actively going to seek with some... There are some spots open for different... Within S E F liaison with the school and such, and they're focused on just getting the plans ready for the next school year and the fundraising.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cho. Anyone else? Liaisons? Okay. I think we can move to public comment. Do you wish to read the ground rules?
Yes, I will, Mr. President. Thank you. We are now open for public comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak shall first seek recognition by the presiding officer. Please come to the microphone and state your name and address in a clear audible tone for the record. All comments should be directed to the board president and not an individual member of the board. Unless additional time is granted by the board president, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. In addition, please note that this portion of the meeting is for public comment and not meant to be a back-and-forth. Board members and administration will not respond to questions or comments at this time. However, information will be provided as soon as possible.
Good evening, Mr. President. Tom Getz, Senator. We've lived here in Summit for 44 years now because we value its diversity. We value its diversity and believe public schools are any community's number-one asset. All six of our kids are proud high school graduates in Summit. Even our grandson is a fifth grader now at Lincoln. We appreciate very much your creativity and how you reopened the schools post-pandemic, not simply because business as usual. You've established brand-new norms, and I congratulate you for that. But instead of pushing... I don't believe the Board of Ed should spend $34 million in capital on things not even itemized. capital on things not even itemized in your own long-range facilities plan, already on file with NJ DOE. Instead of rushing to piggyback a parallel municipal underwriting, stop and realize that the district's enrollment today is down twenty-five people from a year ago, and fully two hundred students, about five percent below the all-time peak recently of 2013. Rarely, barely two hundred and ninety seniors graduated this month compared to three hundred and six five years ago. In other words, we're not growing. We don't need more facilities. In fact, this IIOF latest wish list contains more discretionary building and grounds projects than STEAM, curricular innovations. Chairperson Miller explicitly reported on her Education Subcommittee last time that she has never vouched for the IIOF educationally, nor has Trenton announced any new matching funding opportunities, like the $24 million rods grants that Lou Pepe did qualify to perform $60 million worth of upgrades in his last five years here at Summit Schools. So you should also be aware that the debt service already consumes a dangerously large portion of City Hall's budget. The primary rationale for undertaking a very controversial Broad Street West redevelopment now is supposed to pay for the new fire department headquarters without issuing more bonds. In other words, you're dreaming if you think you can sell more bonds. It's not on the cards. Please pay more attention to us taxpayers and table, Roman numeral twelve, item F, no, I'm writing E tonight. Don't force common councils to override the Board of School estimates. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask for additional comments. I'm not sure if there's anyone else in the meeting available for further comment. Any other comments? Okay. Yeah, I have a motion to close, and should we concurrently approve the committee reports with that motion, or is it just public comment?
Just public comment.
Okay. Motion to close public comment.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Okay, we move forward. The approval of the board minutes from our May 12th meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
And, Mr. President, if I might, just before we move into curriculum?
Yes.
There are three revisions for the agenda this evening, all under personnel. Under personnel, item D3, the salary should be recorded as $20,549 based upon halftime. Under item F, the hourly rate should be recorded as $25.75, and on item double R, the total amount should be $1,435.49. Thank you.
Okay. We will get there shortly. Thank you for those edits. Item 11, curriculum instruction programs. I would just like to offer a very brief thank you to the donors of the scholarships noted in this section of our agenda. They are meaningful to the students who have received them, and so on behalf of the board, thank you for those funds. And so with that, do I have a motion to approve items A and B?
So moved.
Seconded.
On the roll, Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Vice President Cho?
Yes.
President Cologne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Finance, there's no shortage of items in the finance section this evening. Do I have a motion to approve item A through item triple T?
So moved. Seconded.
Any discussion? On the roll, Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Vice President Cho?
Yes.
President Cologne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Not a question, just a question. What? Are there, are our lunch price recommendations a representative increase?
The representative increase is 50 cents, with the exception of elementary school breakfast, which is 55 cents.
Okay. Item 13, school board operation. And before I seek a vote for these items, I would like the board secretary to read the resolution and the preface points for item E, given the weight of that item in this vote. So, Mr. Jess?
Certainly. Resolution of the Board of Education of the City of Summit and the County of Union, New Jersey authorizing certain actions in connection with proposed school facilities projects. Whereas the Board of Education of the City of Summit and the County of Union, New Jersey seeks to submit school facilities projects to the Board of School Estimate consisting of additions, renovations, and site improvements at Summit Middle School and Summit High School, HVAC upgrades at Summit Middle School, window replacement at Brayton Elementary School, and renovation of Tatlock Fieldhouse, collectively the project. And whereas the school district will seek debt service aid with respect to the project, and whereas the board now seeks to take the initial steps in order to proceed with the planning and authorization of, one, the project, and, two, the submission of a bond referendum authorizing the project.
Thank you. And I would also, as was noted by the Operations Committee, like to offer a note of gratitude to yourself, Mr. Jess, as well as Superintendent Huff and the district administration for the diligence and transparency in preparing and developing this resolution during the past year, and for addressing all of the financial, operational, facilities, educational questions that arose from our board during these past several months, as well as from the community during the meeting that was held last month. And so thank you for that transparency and diligence. And so with that point made, can I have a motion to approve items we have through, we have one other item after E, A through F in the operations section?
So moved.
Seconded.
On the roll, Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Vice President Cho?
Yes.
President Cologne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving to item 14, personnel, and inclusive of all of the revisions that were noted by Mr. Jess, and thank you for those. Can I have a motion to approve item A through item W? W?
So moved. Seconded.
On the roll, Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Vice President Cho?
Yes.
President Cologne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Policies and regulations. Do I have a motion to approve the first and second readings, as was noted in the committee readout?
Moved. Seconded.
On the roll, Ms. Stanton?
Yes.
Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Justice?
Yes.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes.
Vice President Cho?
Yes.
President Cologne?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. We do have the need for a closed session this evening. However, Mr. Jess, are you able to close this session and this meeting before we move into closed?
I am. If you will permit me, I will read the resolution and go through everything.
Please do so.
Summit Board of Education may hold an executive session to discuss appropriate matters. Closed session minutes will be reviewed periodically to determine appropriateness of their release. There may or, there will not be action taken as a result of this session, and the board will not return. Whereas pursuant to NJSA 12,4-12B, the Board of Education may exclude the public from that portion of a public meeting wherein the board discusses any of the matters set forth at NJSA 10,4-12B, 1 through 9. Now therefore be it resolved that in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, the Board of Education shall conduct a closed session pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 10,4-12B for the purpose of discussing the following matters: personnel. It is anticipated the length of time of this executive session will be sixty minutes, and that action will not be taken after the public, in public after the executive session. And we have a motion to go into closed session once the board adjourns the meeting.
So the first motion is to adjourn, correct?
Correct, first motion is to adjourn.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
So moved.
The meeting is adjourned at 8:25 PM. We're good to move now because we already said, you know, take action, so we're good to go.
Okay. Thank you, and if the closed session lasts sixty minutes, I probably won't walk out of there alive.
Being generous for time.